Sixth Street, that Sixth Street I'm going to call this meeting of the Joshua City Council's order. This meeting is being conducted under the rules of the Texas Open Meeting Act and we will act accordingly. We do have a forum present. If everyone will please stand, we're going to have Councilmember John Wall for pleading some pledges and please remain standing afterward for the invitation by Lisa Schwartz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the effects, one state, under God, one, indivisible.
All right. So we just thank you for the opportunity to gather in your name and in your presence and we just are reminded, Father, of the blueprint of your kingdom that is placed within us, Father. We ask for wisdom from all the council that they would be guided by your hand and navigated by your love first and foremost. We thank you, Lord, for the power that we gain through unity and we just speak the blessings over this city, Joshua, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'm going to amend the agenda before we start the budget workshop. I'm going to move the recognition item number one from public forum to this point if there's no objection. Where is that? Chief?
I can hear you around the corner. One of the great pleasures, probably the greatest pleasure of being the chief is to be able to recognize individuals in your department that excel. And tonight, we're going to do that as well as recognize four members of the community who helped and assisted in helping save a life. On July 3rd, very early hour of the morning before 6:00 AM, we had an automobile accident that occurred about a mile south of here on 174. The individual, for whatever reason, drifted off the highway into the median just before an intersection, striking a culvert in the middle of the intersection of the median, which caused the car to stand out of control and end up on its side on the far side of the intersection. Four employees of our Udon Bell restaurant just happened to be at work thankfully and witnessed this accident. What they did is they came out immediately noticing the car was starting to smoke and they brought their extinguishers with them from the business and knocked down the initial fire that started to begin in the car. The one object in the vehicle, the driver, was still trapped in the vehicle. It was obviously either unconscious or disoriented, was unable to expate themselves from the vehicle. And what happened is this, these two poor employees acting quickly as they did allowed time for the fire personnel to arrive on the scene and finalize and finish the rescue. I'm going to tell this story in two parts because first I want to recognize the four employees of Udon Bell who did this for us. And then afterwards, we will recognize a member of our fire department who actually removed the individual from that vehicle. I'll tell the rest of that story in a moment. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to call up the individuals. We can do them all at one time, I guess, and I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not real familiar with the individuals, so I'm going to call their names out. Tracy Vaughn. Megan Rivera. Pastor Washington. And Thomas Vaughn. If it wasn't for these four individuals, as you'll hear in a moment when I finish this story, the individual who was rescued from that vehicle may not have actually survived. And so I'd like all of you, please, to get these four people. And to help you remember this occasion and what you did, we appreciate it. And Thomas Vaughn. Mr. Washington. Mr. Rivera. Say anything? You don't have to.
First, I just think we need to help him. So, right place, right time.
All right, great. Okay, the rest of the story occurred after they responded, helped and assisted with preventing this vehicle from bursting into flames. This was on Sunday morning. I was at home. I live close and I just happened to respond when I saw this call come out. When I arrived on the scene, I noticed that this vehicle was smoking. As I got out of my vehicle and started to approach that, the wreck vehicle, I saw flames in the compartment, in the passenger compartment. But I saw also those are engine company, which was led by Lieutenant Luke Bergdorf and firefighter Wesley Briggs, who is not here this evening. They had arrived just shortly before I did and had gone to the vehicle to take care of that situation. When I was walking up to the vehicle, what I observed was Lieutenant Bergdorf inside of the vehicle through the driver's window. There was a great deal of smoke coming out at that time and he was reaching in the vehicle. And just as I walked up, he pulled the driver outside of the window of the vehicle. As soon as that vehicle, or as soon as that driver was removed from the vehicle, the inside of the compartment, the passenger compartment erupted into some pretty active flames and some very heavy, thick, black smoke. That individual had not been removed when they were. There is no doubt to me that they would have suffered some serious physical injuries or possibly even worse. So tonight, we're going to recognize Lieutenant Bergdorf if you're comfortable, please. Lieutenant Bergdorf, on that day, was working for us in a part-time position. Lieutenant Bergdorf is a firefighter for the City of Arlington Fire Department as well. And we are very glad to have him with us. He's a great leader for our young and growing fire department. This is the second time that I've had the privilege of awarding him with a lifesaving award. So this evening, we're going to be presenting him with a commendation and a ribbon, which contains a star signifying this is the second commendation for lifesaving. We also have a little stuff to go on. The individuals, individuals like Lieutenant Bergdorf and the individuals who are for our city in regards to Udon Bell. Our citizens would not have protection that they have. And excuse me for flancing elephant for this moment, but I'm here representing them, not myself. And they don't often get to speak for themselves, but I want to let you know that Lieutenant Bergdorf and the other firefighters, two of which are in the room right now, and we have some other fire employees here with us. Without these individuals, we would not be able to provide protection that we do for this community. And I want to thank the council and also our city manager and other staff for giving us what we need and resources to make that happen. It's very nice to do that. This is his commendation. Tells the tale of what happened that day. This is something we would have lost the semblance of to this chief in Arlington, letting him know that you did this for us. Thank you, Mr. ...
Anything you want to say?
Thanks, Mr. Vaughn. I was just the one there that morning. I full confidence you're placed here with any of our other members and the outcome you can give is safe. Thank you.
We're going to have a five-minute recess, so if you want to take pictures, so-and-so can get that done and then we'll get back into our meeting. Wait until we're back before...
6:44.
6:44, excuse me. All right. We're going to go into our budget workshop this morning and we're going to discuss the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. Mr. Pecot?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you have before you the first draft of the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. The budget presented is balanced. It does not use the, any reserve funds. It is paid for. We are within the allocated funding and we come into the city with some access. What I've prepared this year, and you'll hear a presentation shortly, about why is, we were able to offer two tax rates we make it look at. One would remain the same as last year. There would be no increase in the sales tax rate. And the other would allow us to reduce the tax rate by about two and a half cents. The reason that we've offered both, you'll hear shortly, but it gives us the opportunity to fulfill some obligations next year. There's been interest in increasing the home set exemption, which is a relief that taxpayers will feel much quicker than a two and a half cent reduction in the sales tax. They will see that. I'm sorry, property tax. They will feel that on their evaluation, whereas, you know, a couple of dollars a month, they lower the tax rate, they may not feel. So there's some other options that go with that. There are a couple of items that were not funded, that were requested. And if you look through to the revenues over expenditures, you'll see that there is a surplus of revenue that the council would, at your discretion, could allocate. Last year, the leftover revenue funds were allocated to streets and other courts and prisons for roads and streets. That amount would be $186,318. That would be out for you to distribute if you chose to, or it can be put back in reserves for use at a later time. This budget includes increases to healthcare that were not significant this year. We actually did very well. We didn't get the increase that we expected, so we had some savings there. It also includes, it plugs in cost of livings, it takes into account longevity, it takes into account some staff changes. It also includes the, probably the biggest addition, this addition of four additional full-time firefighters. That is made available by the ESD is proposing this year a grant similar to the Safer Grant. Well, they will fund 75% of salaries for the first two years and it begins to drop and then, kind of like the Safer Grant now, after four years, then we assume that liability. So those positions are plugged in. They approve their budget at the same time that we do. I've been assured by, I say assured, I've been given relatively strong assurances from both the executive director and a few of the commissioners that that is a priority for them and they do believe that it will be funded. This also takes into account an increase in revenue from the ESD of a $40,000 increase in the baseline subsidy. And it includes increases of incentives that will continue for fuel costs and things that have kind of creeped up on volunteers responding as well as the other assets. So the first few pages are the kind of departmental expenditures. There's line items following that. Not to take up too much of your time, but if you, if you have any questions, I think I've had some questions from a few of you over the last few weeks. I thought they got sent to you.
Everything was done electronic.
So, okay. Do I need?
No.
Who, everybody need one? Let's make some copies. What? Oh, okay. So there is. So the copy that you have before you shows the current rate of 711493. The tax rate, which is our current rate, 0.711493, is the current rate. And then there, that is what this budget is proposed on. If you elect not to do the option that we're going to hear about briefly from our financial dividers at SAMCO, he's going to go over a scenario with you that would support the rate that is here. If you elect not to take that option, then it would drop to 6811, somewhere around there, about two and a half cents lower. If you take that option. If you do that option, though, the budget in front of you will not change. It will simply just not have the revenue in that will be presented to you tonight. So the rest of the numbers will stay the same. So you won't need to, we won't need to make new copies to get out. All the departmental numbers will stay the same.
Now, the firefighters, would you, if by some odd chance the ESD does not grant funding for those, what's the...
They would have to be pulled from the budget. You could choose to allocate some of that leftover funding if you chose to. But that certainly is not going to cover all of them, but, I mean, there's other options that you have if you still want to keep them. But it would force us to use reserves or we would need to make some cuts in some other places to balance it out. But I believe that without their funding, the safest option is going to be just not to do them at this point, or at least not to do all four of them.
Like Mike, I've been told by people from the ESD that there's a very good chance that it is going to be approved. So that's, that's a good option.
Well, and some of the cities that they've offered this to have declined, just aren't able to do it. So I don't think that's going to mean they're going to, I think they're limiting it at four. They're not going to, somebody turns into, they're not going to offer them to us. I think four is number for the department, so we would not pursue any additional at this point.
If I have any questions we'd like to ask. We have some of our council heads here.
We do. I've asked them to be here if you guys have some questions. The only person that is not here, I believe, is Carla from the court. And she's what?
Oh, my partner's in class.
Oh, and animal control was in class, but the court budget pretty much remains the same and she didn't ask for anything this year, so I'll tell her since then.
Chris and I have just one question. Is this budget enough to get some roads back in some better shape? As much as you'd like, I know. That's one of the things we're getting from citizens is the situation. I hope we've been trying to use chip seal upgrades, which basically just prolongs the use of the subject so that we have to do something. Is there anything that you feel like was extra in this or definitely the static or money that you might want to play part of that?
I'm going to help you now.
Yeah.
14th Street.
14th Street.
Tech Stop is reviewing some options for the no-through truck lanes that we have to try to alleviate some of the pressure off of the S-curve here, trucks running all over. I suspect that one of their recommendations likely will come back and be to open Fourth Street up. The issue that prevented that from the past is when that was initially done several years ago, there was lots of small children on that road. Somebody actually called today and asked if the city would consider raising that speed limit back up to 30 miles per hour, up from 20. So we'll be taking a look at that too, but I expect that's one of the things that Tech Stop will come back with. And if they do that, that road is going to need some work. It's not going to handle that heavy truck traffic. So if there's something that we look at increasing, that would be what I would think might be. If they take the route that they're talking about now, the bypass 14th Street will stay. And so if we redo it, it's not like they're going to dig it up in a few years or whenever. If the bypass or the underpass comes. So that's something that kind of just came up today and I expect we would, if it's not funded, probably we at some point will be coming back to you, actually to consider that. And I believe you were thinking $60,000, $70,000, as you said.
Well, that's...
That's if we do it in-house.
That was six months ago. You know, I, you know, I've been in the policy ground, but that's all this thing, you know.
It falls up above $90 a ton, so it's up significantly.
That's what's so difficult about saying, you know, a part of 189,000, I mean, you know, street construction is very, very expensive.
And the best option may be to leave it and not allocate it, because this is probably going to come up. But we also are, we're in a pretty good position. If we needed to use reserve funds to cover that street, we could and we would be fine for that amount.
Questions? Don't we take any action on this?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. So we'll now move into our one session. First item is to discuss some questions related to the Texas State Council's 2022.
So you have the numbers in front of you. They're, you'll notice in some of these, as you look, that some of these line items are growing very close to 100% as we get closer to the end of the year. These will start to creep up. You'll also see some line items that are way below that 90%. And so I did send out a memo today to the staff asking them to pay very close attention to what they're spending. Currently, our revenues are at 82, just over 82%, which is about 1 and 1/4% under our budget. So we're just a tad bit over. However, August, the August allotment we got today is significant and we'll write this back without any issue. I still think that we will, the year end will be revenues over expenditures. I don't think we're in any danger of running over. But there are a few things that are thrown off in the expenditure line. We've had some big bills to the fire department for vehicle repairs. There's some stuff in the police department for some vest and safety equipment. A lot of that money will be reimbursed. It's just not here yet. So I don't, nothing really jumped out that concerned me. But we have asked them as year end closes and we're also going to have to make some adjustments in how we close out because the auditors, we're going to be needing to finish up the end of October, having everything done versus normally it's November for them to hit the deadline for presentation at the audit. But they're going to need a little more time to do that and we are changing firms this year. So we're going to be working really close and personal.
Questions? I'd love to discuss on changing the utility functions from the city to Joshua to Winston Nation.
So last meeting, we discussed reading the automated trash. I've been in close contact with Abel. He's our account manager for this area and he's still not able to give me hard numbers on what it will look like to go fully automated and keep the plastic meat. So he's saying it's going to be spring before we even really get true numbers because of the cost of those trucks just are up and down so much. Really, I think it is just a pass-through with no change or no cost increase. But the other question would be the whole trash pickup, which he gave me a question for it. So in the meantime, I guess where this all started was we have issues with, because we only have trash billing, we don't have water accounts. We have a lot of residents that don't currently pay for trash service. Or if they do have trash service, we've got right now currently over 111 accounts that are 120 days plus past due. And the way that we do our billing right now is we, it's basically kind of like what Mike said the other day, it's the honor system. We send them a list of our active accounts and they just fill us accordingly. Well, if we were able to move and allow them to do our billing for us, everything works within their own system. So right now, when trash accounts are past you, they just go down the street and pick them all up. And we don't require them to use any specific trash cans. There's really no quick and easy way for them to determine whether they should pick it up or not pick it up. So Paul, he said that they do offer billing in-house and they have a system and each one of their trucks has an iPad that basically tells them which house to pick up from and which house not to. So we're trying to clean up the accounts and I guess at one point, they did our billing for us and then we pulled it back because we were looking at doing a, was it an impact fee survey?
Yes. Drainage impact fee.
So in order for us to really be able to implement that fee, we would have to pull our billing back. But over the last couple of years, the council's not really expressing any interest in implementing such a fee. So in order to just clean up the billing and get everybody on track and make sure that the residents do have trash accounts as according to the ordinance of, it just, the easy way to do it is to have them do the billing. So that would mean that they wouldn't come here to pay their bill. They offer online payments or mail-in payments. They would handle all the new accounts, all the closed accounts, and it would be up to them to chase it. They did say that they would offer to give us a list each month that don't currently have trash service or has to be related to their trash cans, so we can make sure that we're following up enforcement is and making sure that we're keeping the handle and there's not excess trash laying around. But also if we need to enforce the ordinance, we would be able to. So I just kind of wanted to get your direction on what your thoughts were. Would you rather keep it in-house or there's just no good way to control it until, one, we either go fully automated and we have those trash cans or two, we allow them to do the billing? or two, we allow them to do the billing.
I don't personally have a problem with them doing billing. I mean, I think it makes sense. I've seen comments from from several residents that didn't realize that they needed to contact the city instead of paying for it.
Yeah, and it's not their fault. They just usually assume that it's on your water.
There's a lot of issues. So so to that point, what would we do? And and I understand people are only as informed as the generation that they read. What would we do to ensure that residents understand this is a change? Are they going, are we going to send the information on the accounts that we already have? And those accounts are automatically set up and then the newsletter or something that people need to know.
Right now, Angela has collected a list, is it the voter registration?
We have another list that she's born off of. But the easiest way to reach everyone is through a paper newsletter. That way it goes to every house in the city.
Uh, you said, first thing you said that they're gonna pull the trash cans. I don't understand that. I own my trash can.
Those, yes. So when they go fully automated, they would just take the trash can up. Until we go automated, then they would just not pick up the trash.
Not yours. They will not take your private trash can.
They gonna give notice? To give them?
Yes. Yeah, Abel said they give a thirty day notice and then after the sixtieth day, then they do not pick up the trash.
They're gonna set up where you can do all that. I like to do all my billing automatic. I don't want to give up.
Yeah, you do. You can pay online and or you can just mail payments in, so. And there's no cost. He said that they would take it on, no additional cost. So right now, we have a third party that we use for billing and also for the newsletters. And the newsletters go out quarterly, but you know, as you know, the trash goes out once a month. So it would put some costs down on the billing itself. We still have the newsletters, but there's really no extra expense for us to have them do it other than just I don't want to say not having control of it because we still will have the contract with them, these, you know, contract for services and.
We did that before and there was not any problems. Like she said, the only reason that we took it on was to because there was discussion about there's so much ongoing stuff about drainage and impact fees, there was, that would give us the the median in which to to send those bills out. I don't think there's, from what I've been hearing and from those of you that I spoke to, I don't believe that there is an appetite to pursue that. And I I can't think of anything that I would rather not do than to come in here and recommend that we add another fee on to to the residents. I don't think we need it right now. I think we're taking these projects as they come and and we're dealing with them. I don't, I don't think that we need to spend almost a hundred thousand dollars on an engineering study to set it up. That's what's required. We're we're doing okay right now and I I don't, I don't necessarily think we need to go that route.
We add a little more collections, like pick up fifty or a hundred thousands. Does that help for contract?
Probably why not that easy? Maybe on a larger scale it would. What I was, what Abel was gonna go to their, it's not a board, but I guess to their, to the corporate upper level and ask to do just a pass through, leave it the way it is and not increase the cost or change anything. But because they're making such an investment with having to purchase more trucks, we'd also talked about maybe possibly moving to doing the recycling automated now since it's the same, that you know, it's already the same truck. My main, my main thing is trying to clean up the billing account because if they're gonna continue to pick up the trash, we have no, no resources to not, you know, they're, they can't go with a piece of paper at every single house.
They're just paying for those pickups.
Most of this is rental properties. We, they don't notify us when they leave and so they just.
Angela does a really good job. I mean, she works on it every single day. She's got a list. She sends Mike and I a monthly report of what she's collected. And so she spends a large amount of time trying to collect and she does reach out to the the property owners of those rental properties. But they just, they continue to pick up the trash. There's really not much I can do. I mean, why would you pay for something if you didn't have to? So it's a good way to control it.
But it's a cost that we no longer have to incur in time bills. So they're sending us to the city for.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be an astronomical amount because we still send out the quarterly newsletters. But I think we get better utilized. Angela's time to do other, to help with court and start running court. We definitely have room to keep her busy, so. Yes, it is a cost savings. And to me, if you look at it in the long run, we don't pay for accounts now that they're not, you know, they're past due, so it's gonna clean that up too, so.
So do we pretty much have a consensus to go ahead and pursue this?
I just wanted to make sure that y'all didn't, you know, that I've thought about it all the way around and I'm not creating any issues on moving the billing away. But like Mike said, I mean, it's like it was, it's a lot of areas.
I agree. And they're saying, and they approached us, so they're saying this is a positive for their swap.
Yeah, they want to because our system doesn't integrate with theirs and vice versa, so it's very manual right now.
Encouragement that we're willing to offer them in on the other stuff so that we can try to get the information that we're requesting so we can make a decision on the other stuff.
So go ahead and pursue it. That was too much of a discussion. Okay, item number three, questions regarding regular session agenda items. Any questions?
Excuse me, ma'am. You skipped the annexation. I'm sorry to lot sizes, I mean.
Page two that has three additional lines.
All right, so item number three is discussion on the parties of residence. Lot sizes. We sent in as a question by Mr. Julian Torres. We do have the paperwork with Mr. Torres's feet, so we can step up to my statement.
Did you push the button at the bottom?
My name is Julian Torres. I live nine fifty-one on Drive and Joshua's webpage, the city webpage, says unlock Joshua's potential. With that, I know that Councilman Walter lives in Wildwood, but I'm gonna pick on that for a minute because it's something I pray to supply, I believe. I've changed the ordinance on minimum lot size. Wildwood was was basically sold to previous administration. They were granted a variance from ten thousand. And they said, you know, by the time this is all said and done, sixty-six lots, you know, you take an average, you know, they're all gonna be about nine thousand square feet, so it's just a little under the minimum, right? But that's car sales, because when you take these seventy-two hundred, seventy-two hundred square foot lots, there's thirty-seven of over half in that subdivision. That totals up, if you do the math on an acre, two hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred square feet. That averages six point one one houses stuffed in one acre. Then you take the streets, the open spaces, that average increases even more. Again, I ask you to unlock Joshua's potential. I believe that we should go to twenty-two thousand. And when a developer wants a variance, we're not getting cut at the knees at seventy-two hundred square feet. I believe there's a lot of unlocking potential that can be done by not giving the developers that type of leeway. There's already in Wildwood, some houses that are rent houses owned by investment firms. They're you know, your average first time homeowner lives in a home for three to five years. Those houses, at least thirty-seven of them, in my opinion, are gonna be rentals in the near future because they're they're just for a starting camp. And they're gonna move to something bigger and better. Let's see, so, I mean, is that really what we want as a city, a house full of rentals? I don't believe so. So again, I ask you, unlock Joshua's potential.
I did like say houses that I know, I don't see all that rich house, the houses that are sold in the last six months for over four hundred thousand. And we got one up there right now for over five hundred thousand.
And then the economy is cooling off. There's a house right across the street from me that's six ninety-nine and they're not gonna get back unless California comes in and buys.
We got some.
Yeah. How's the, how's your, are you happy with your structure of your home?
Yeah, we had some problems, but we had to have forty people come in. We like our little house. You know, with this heat that we've had, I just paid my way. I had thirteen hundred kilowatt hours. That's pretty good.
Yeah, any other questions?
Hey, from my perspective, I am very much in agreement of why do we have or is it just that we're very quickly operating variances? I understand that there's there's always going to be a reason where we may need to genuinely consider a variance. But a variance because it's inconvenient for a developer to come in and structure a, an area than what we have time and money to have a committee put together whatever our recommended organisms are. So I'm not necessarily in favor of variance, of variances. But as far as wanting to have these larger sized lots, I would like for one of my kids to be able to move back and buy a home here. And they're not gonna buy a three hundred thousand dollar one. They're probably gonna rent a house. They're probably gonna rent a smaller house. So while I'm able to afford a home that's maybe a little bit more, I don't necessarily think Joshua has to be people that can only afford four hundred thousand dollar home. So I think that we need a variety of sizes and spaces and rentals and, you know, bigger homes and smaller homes and bigger lots and rural lots. I think what makes Joshua a better community is there's room for everybody. Within a reason, we need to think about what decisions we're making as far as who we're putting where. But I don't think it's safe for us to do it across the board. Everything has to be bigger because then we're we're pushing out our kids. And I don't want that. I want my kids to eventually maybe be able to afford to come back here. I do agree though, if we have ordinances and recommendations in place, when these developers come in and want cross-the-board variances, that's not something I'm necessarily really favorite.
So I do agree. Well, if if I can say, you know, in Wildwood, there is approximately twenty-eight thousand square feet. There was supposed to be a park. There's not even a park bench in there. So I will. So I'll agree with you in the fact that as we've had that renovation getting chopped into. Before, in my opinion, before Mike became our city manager, I'll even pick on Cooper Valley. The congestion in there is ridiculous. Well, that's 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 my point. That's where I'm going with you. When you drive through, whether it be Old Mountain Valley, or you drive through Joshua Meadows, you don't have nearly as many beautiful parks on the street. So that makes it easier for fire apparatus to get down the street. Makes it easier for EMS or police to respond. And also indicate, you know, in the event that there was a house fire, if you had a structured fire in Wildwood, there's a very good chance you're gonna have two structural fires pretty quick if not through. You don't have that problem in other places. I'm in favor of at least making sure that we keep everything on ten thousand, which is the ordinance now. Because we've given up too much.
I mean, you plot out a whole development and you tell me that ninety-eight percent of them are within that, whenever we change it. There's a couple of lots that just that's a discussion, that's a discussion for them. That's where you have, we did everything else, but we have a couple here that let's not just across the board.
I have to agree and say we have variance when we it has to be in this current situation to to round out variance. If you have the rule, you need to stick to it. And I agree with you about Cooper Valley because it absolutely lacks. You cannot move forward here because of course the water is so small. You can't have a backdoor at all. There's no facts.
Be careful. Variance is a neat new show, but it's.
I think what they're talking about are in the planned developments, they're the it's supposed to be in give and take. If you're gonna allow somebody to have a smaller lot size, they're supposed to be providing something in return for that. It's it's a negotiated process. What what has happened here, the ten thousand square foot regulations put in place years ago in and along with the eighteen hundred square foot minimum regulation to keep property values up so that homes, you know, you had decent sized homes. The way things are now, that is not the driving force for evaluation of homes. But what what we've done is to try to slow things down. Aaron and I have talked and we, it's just made kind of clear, we are not going to bring anything, any development for approval that's less than ten thousand square feet lots. I think there's enough demand now that we can get that. They're putting these big houses on these smaller lots and 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 they are, there are some areas that are problematic with, you know, by the time you put, you know, kids driving and they got cars on the street and all that, they they, it does create a problem, so. You choose to go up to the half acre, that's fine. We can do that too. That's probably, the cost of development comes into play, but the unfortunate statement that that I oftentimes give and and sometimes I don't like to hear it, it is not the city's job to make a developer profitable. And so that's on him or or she or her. But we we have done that and and we just, we kind of draw the line right now. It is, we haven't any test submitted, the next lot or development I think coming online is ten thousand square foot lots. Most of them are bigger. And I will tell you that in almost fifteen years that I've been here, that is, other than Joshua Meadows, that's the only development that has held to ten thousand square foot. Everybody else has, for one reason or another, gotten away from it and I'm sorry. We, there've been planned developments approved, that's right. And so if those come now, staff is not going to come carry the water for a developer that wants a eight thousand square foot lot versus ten. He can do that himself and it would likely come with a recommendation that we hold them at ten. I think we have the demand. We've got people wanting to come here. I think we're okay to do that. If they're bigger, they're bigger. You know, Joshua Meadows got bigger lots and they sell every house they put on the ground. So it's.
I'm trying to say this. We make it very, very difficult, home builders and Joshua. We really do. The ordinances and things that we have, you know, these guys that are buying large properties and building, it's easy for them with plan development and so. You know, these guys that are buying large properties and building, it's easy for them with plan development and so on and so forth. Our city is is starting to get to the point where we've got smaller. Developers who want to come in and and develop our downtown area again. These old homes around here that will go to the forties and fifties that are becoming dilapidated. If we were to change that minimum lot size, we're pretty end up burdening upon them. We've got a house now that's at eleven hundred square feet on a eight, eight thousand foot, square foot lot. And we're gonna tell them, no, you can't put anything there because it's gotta be a half acre. You know, we we're we're cutting people off at the means by doing that. I understand your 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 reasoning and 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 there's there's no question that it's a well thought out. Plan and so on and so forth. I think if we stick with the ten thousand in large. And and we we truly dip our heels in and try to make up for some of the past mistakes that are made. Um, I I think we can, we can come to a happy agreement with everybody. Um, I do appreciate the simple fact, Julia, that that you and Danny have been persistent to get this through council. Um, in fact, I encouraged you to come, didn't I? Because this is a discussion that needs to be had. And um, we we will take it into consideration or look at it. Um, I don't know that we will act on it anytime real soon. But but I I do think it's something that the staff now knows. We need to dip our heels in on that ten thousand and no variants. And if, you know, somebody comes in, hey, I just bought this house on. VTAC or someplace beach or whatever, I wanna tear it down, I wanna build a new house. We need to find a way. Make it where either replacing a house on that lot. If it was eleven hundred square feet, we're not gonna make them go to eighteen hundred square feet. We're gonna let them build it and let them have a square foot home there because that's what that lot size was set up for when that original house was built. I think that that that's kind of the direction we need to try and go. But this discussion has been a good one. I I I think we've all. We've all thought long and hard about this and I appreciate you so much bringing it up. I really do. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
I've always thought variants are slippery slope. Once you start doing that, you don't stop until.
It was a lot of heartache.
Yeah.
Um, just the builders were pouring concrete at four thirty in the morning on some of those lots. And apparently nobody knew the rules and regulations.
That's that's a district discussion. So so we need, we need to get on with our meeting and everything. But again, thank you very much, Joe. Alright, so.
So. This is an an issue that came up when. There was a property owner across the street from this residence who subdivided their property. And is, the plan is to build a second home. And so the. When, I'm I'm sorry, where he, there he is, I'm sorry. Uh, Su, Mr. Su. Uh, looked into doing the same process and when he came in, um, he started going through the process of plating and. Some other things to to resolve issues for water meters and so forth. Only to find out that he was under a development. And so when he, the 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 property that he has. Puts him, when he divides it, puts him at less than one acre. Um, on that second home. And the county will not issue uh, septic permits for anything under one acre. We allow them at half acre. And so he went through a plating process, he jumped through some hoops. I think, um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, before it was determined that. Uh, he was actually outside of the city. He was under a development agreement. He lived on the. Uh, south side of Ranch Road, which was in the ETJ and he was under a development agreement. With that, he still cannot get um, the permit through the county. And so his request is, is that he be voluntarily annexed. Into the city so that he can subdivide this property. That we forced, I say forced, we made him plant it that way. Um, and that was done in error. But this way he can, he can build the house and meet the requirements of the city. And have his property there.
Have you requested a variance from the county on that?
I don't know. I'm giving a variance.
I I called him to talk to him too. They told me the same thing. They they will not.
I I know. Experience through. They have it. They have experience for this very reason. So that's, if they're saying no, they they have their rules of saying no, so. Just a question. So so voluntarily annexed into the city?
Well, and and it could be, it's it's probably a Terry, a a question for Terry because he is under a development agreement. We could just exercise the right to to bring him in based on development of the property. We have not done that to others that have carved off an acre or two to build home for a family member, whatever we've. We've left, let them do that. But that that is an option under that agreement that we could elect to just to to bring him in. Terry, I think I'd have to explain that process a little better than me, but it it's due.
Well, I I guess my my next question would be, why don't we just let Terry? Tell us which way is the best way to to accomplish this for this this gentleman and let him have his.
Yes.
So anybody have any other questions or suggestions? Is Terry wanting to speak to this?
Yeah, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
President City.
Yeah, he's, he's talking, but it's not commencing.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Terry, we cannot hear.
I I have unmuted. I don't know if you could, I.
We can hear you now.
Okay, great. Um, the the quickest way to go about is just doing a a voluntary annexation. If that's the route council wants to follow, that that would be the quickest way to do that.
Hey, can we do that this evening or do we have to have it as an item next month?
We have to have it as an item. Uh, we're, we have some requirements um, under state law, the new annexation statute. But we can accomplish that pretty quickly now since it's a voluntary annexation.
Uh, we have some procedures that we have to go through, also new state law, but it would be on the agenda in September. The to issue annex so that you could go ahead and do your thing.
Okay, so this is step one. What you do is going to do, send that leverage and stuff.
Yeah, we have to do some notification, I think, and advertising and stuff like that. No.
Do everything we could be able to have important next month, Terry.
Yeah, if I get, if I get some of the paperwork, I can work it out. We are required by law to have a development agreement, which is basically our standard. Uh, services we provide for any app properties that are annexed. So we can get that done and we can get that uh, ready to go for the September meeting. I'll just ask Mike. Or uh, Aaron to send me the appropriate documentation so we have the proper description and we can take it from there. And we will for, I will forward a draft development agreement to uh, Mike and Aaron and they can have the property owner sign it. And we'll be all set to go for next month.
Awesome. Mr. Su, we will get that thing carried for you, sir. Thank you so much.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so. Any questions regarding your regular session agenda items? Okay, here's them. We'll go to updates for mayor and council members and updates from city staff members. I request that we put this item in here. Um, as we go through our our month, uh, out doing what we should be doing as as a council. Uh, mixing and and being with with people, we need people to come in and kind of report on what's, what we've been doing, what's been going on. I was with San Antonio for the TML training. I'm telling you, the things that have changed since the last time I was there in the law. Uh, it's a refresh of courses that everybody kind of needs. Uh, I have visited the city. And school library. I will be working on the library board there. And if you've not been in our school library, you need to go. It is pretty fantastic place, folks. They they've got a good deal. Uh, we also, did anybody else have anything they want?
Well, I visited with three of my neighbors who turned in, put in for the committees and get vacation.
Good. Of all of you, that's the boards that needs some people. Um, now we'd also talk about uh, a requirement for that all the boards, commissions, corporations. Have the president or chair to be a city council member and uh, it will be on the agenda next month. Right, Terry had a couple of things he needed to discuss with us about that, correct, Terry?
Uh, yeah, we need to do, uh, I I I I suggest, I think, when this issue came up last month when I was present. That there might be some issue with the zoning board of adjustment just because they're in a different role. Uh, than other, uh, there are the boards of commissions under state law. But other than that, uh, we would need to uh, to change the planning of zoning commission. Uh, the for the planning of zoning commission, the the zoning ordinance right now requires that the the. The chair of the board of the pla, of the commission is elected by the uh, commission itself. So we would have to do some changes in that, in that zoning ordinance to reflect that. That would have to go to P and Z first for approval, then to council after that since. And both of them require a public hearing since it is part of our zoning ordinance. The other boards of commissions that are in our code of ordinances, we just have to go through and change those on a board by board basis. And again, if if we're looking at type A and type B, those have bylaws, so that's, that's a di, kind of a different matter. I don't know if you're, you're looking at that as well as a change, but that takes a bylaws change of each of those boards.
Would it be possible for you to um, just kind of draft up something and send it to to. Mike or Alice either one so that we have an idea of what we need to do and uh. Uh, be okay to distribute it to all of us so we can come up with some questions and ideas to discuss on next month's agenda?
Sure. Um, do you want to draft ordinance or just just kind of outline what the issues are and what we need to do for each of them?
Why don't, why don't you just give us an outline what?
Okay.
Um, yeah, this is something that has to happen tomorrow. So. I I I think we, we need to go through the full thought process, uh, instead of just, okay, here's the one to do it now. So I.
I will do so.
Everybody? Alright, anybody else have anything they wanna talk about?
I visited with the library, actually. And um, someone attended next month's board meeting and see, um, there was a little bit of. Problem, I guess, conflict that uh, they have previously, but. You know, I ran out, um, so they asked me to attend.
Alright, okay, so now we will go to. Item G, which is our public forum and yeah. What I saw we wanted to talk about here, so we're already done with that. Uh, was there anybody else who wished to speak and address the council? Alright, moving right along. Item H. Consent agenda. Uh, I would like to break each of these items apart and discuss them separately if you know objection. Okay, item number one, just to discuss, consider possible action on approval of meetings of the July twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two meeting. Do I have any corrections and questions? Okay, we have a motion by councilperson Anderson to approve the minutes. I have a second behind this Nichols. Is there any discussion on motion to approve the minutes request? All those in favor say aye. Motion passed. Item number two, discuss, consider possible action ratifying the letter of engagement for annual audit services. For Stone Garrett Williams.
It was time for us to make the changes. You recall over four or five years, we. Redo the request for qualifications for audit services. This firm, it will receive several responses back. This firm. One of the things we wanted was to make sure that we had someone that was local. We wanted to do more of. Arizona and New Mexico conference calls budget over the audit. The the person who will be working with Joanna, mainly here, we have history with from. Another firm prior to the last one, so we. We thought it's the best option. We did need to get them started, so. We've got him engaged, they'll be. The men of August, they'll hopefully start this process, so. Do you guys to okay it?
Well, the prices, is there a cost in this agreement? You know, we're in. But this, this is what we have budget for the year for, that's correct. Do we need to authorize to manage your design this?
Twenty-nine, two minutes.
That's a lot less than the last one. Was it less than what it was last year? Yeah, that's, that's not bad.
So basically what we need to do is just to, to ratify the agreement. Uh, we've already got them engaged. Um, and started, so we just need John to ratify the agreement.
Do we need to authorize you to sign this?
Already did.
You already did? Okay.
So, yeah, oh, okay.
Alright, so do I have any questions? I have a motion second to ratify the letter of engagement for annual audit services with Stone Garrett Williams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Thank you very much. Item number three, discuss, consider possible action on the interlocal agreement. Uh, Johnson County Special Utilities District, the water usage facilities relocation and maintenance required. Mocking work base to.
This is a standard agreement that John did development for. Um, this gives Jay some ability to put water reservoir infrastructure under the roadway right away. To keep them out of yards and around other things. We've done these on new developments. Uh, where we already have drainage infrastructure in place. This is probably the fourth or fifth one we've done and it's the same as the others.
Alex, you said you had some additions or corrections?
Yes, um, on the third paragraph, we just added the date of March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. And in the exhibit or the legal description is, we made a correction that was sent to us. It's the third from the bottom. We just corrected the legal description. We just corrected the legal description.
Okay. Any questions? Then all the same motion?
I'm in motion, we we're great, we're.
Approving the interlocal agreement.
Agreement with Jayse for my deeper face too.
Okay, I have the motion by Ms. Anderson. But I second behind Mr. Walter. Okay. The motion is to approve the interlocal agreement, Jayse, for the mock the work base two. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? I have a motion unanimous. Item number four, discuss the super possible action on another rule for Jayse for killing facilities relocation maintenance regarding Joshua Highlands. Same thing, Mr. Peacock?
Same argument.
Mayor, there's two corrections on it. The first one is the third paragraph, we added the date of May twentieth, twenty twenty one. And the one that's online, it talks about water and sewer lines. It's actually going to say approved a planned development. And then on the fourth paragraph, let's see here, we did the same thing.
Any questions? And I will. Okay. Item seven. Sanders the second, it was second was data motion to approve the interlocal agreement, Jayse, for the Joshua Highlands development, all those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Okay, that's the consent agenda, we're now moving into our regular agenda items. Item number one, discuss considering possible action on issues and tax notes and the amount of dollars or expenses related to municipal project regarding the land purchase, architectural design, engineering or other related cost design, Mr. Peacock?
Uh, Mayor, this is a matter that we briefly spoke about. We have Andrew Friedman, uh, who is uh from uh Samco. It was our uh tax consulting firm that we use for bonds and so forth. Uh, and what he's going to do is present an option um that would put us in a a position to absorb the cost of new construction. Should we get to that, it just puts us in a better spot and here down the road. Uh, he's going to explain the the details of it and that this is is what will determine um where we set the tax rate, so.
Your own. Thank you. Andrew Friedman with Samco Capital Markets. Uh, the tax note is going to sound very familiar to you. It's something that we went through and sold in January earlier of this year. Uh, the timing of this and the reason for your consideration, I'm substantial advisor to this, I work for you all, uh, when you want to borrow money. Uh, this opportunity, you know, one comes about because there's a need, capital projects with its acquisition, design, destruction, et cetera. As you all are working through your budget, you've got your certified taxable values. You've got an M and O rate, it's funding of the operations of the city. It's half how much you can increase that levy annually. Then you've got the interest and sinking portion of that tax rate. As we have loaned the tax base and we've received quite a bit of growth this year versus your tax rate now, ultimately a good thing. Uh, but what it leaves for your consideration when you've got projects and need to consider is borrowing to fund capital improvements or in this case, uh, start funding what may be larger capital improvements down the road uh without having to increase your tax rate. So that's not to say that you're not increasing taxes, but our tax rate's coming down. This gives you the opportunity uh should you all desire to move forward with it, to issue a million dollars in a tax note. Tax note, as you'll recall, is limited to a seven-year amortization. Uh, you've got the capacity for roughly one million dollars uh in order to go fund design, in this case, our land acquisition uh toward those projects. Uh, the timetable that I handed out would have you approving this uh on September fifteenth, which is the same day that you're adopting your tax rate. In order to levy a tax, you have to have an outstanding debt uh in order to collect that revenue, we've got to apply the税 taxation, so that debt has to be outstanding when you adopt your tax rate. So this timeline would allow for that if you all choose to move forward. Uh, we bring bids back from the competitive bidding process, just as we did in January. Uh, we're going to award to the lowest interest rate bidder um through private placement. The private placement, we don't go to the credit rating agencies, we don't put this out to Wall Street uh for for them to bid on. We try to place it with a local bank. That's in an effort to keep the cost of issuance as low as possible. Uh, certainly, there will be a lot of interest, uh, given the smaller amount, the seven-year amortization uh to get this done. And have that as low of an interest rate as possible. You've got multiple bidders who will step forward to to produce an interest rate, give us confidence that we're getting the best deal in the market, we'll solicit it. Uh, if you all want to move forward to local banks, regional banks, and also the national banks that buy and hold this for their own account. And then the funds would be delivered to you all October twelfth. By putting this uh in your budget and calculating within your tax rate, it allows for you to set that tax rate and then collect that tax levy, which is of course due by the end of January twenty twenty three before making your first. Uh, you have a limited ability as a city to go borrow money without having set a tax rate for it and be able you have to come up with the money to make that first payment. So the timing is always very tight. It's a busy time of year for frankly, all cities that are trying to adopt budgets to determine what their capital improvement plans are and and get the financings in place. And we're going to tackle those projects, and so that's why we're here this time of year, just before you adopt your budget. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Your your maintenance operations, of course, and your tax rate, it's by far the the largest, most important aspect of your budget is capped by state law as where you can adopt that rate. Again, this is as we're losing rate on the M and O side. By legislative dictation, uh, you're able to fund additional capital improvements, keep it towards after the sound and provide some benefit. Additionally, the city will have more capacity for funding future projects, even with the issuance of this. So we're trying to take that a risk of approach. If there's a need for whatever that new municipal facility may be, whether it's a city hall down the road or, you know, larger street projects, you'll be able to come back and then pay the on debt for those projects next year and the following years. Certainly, as you get more and more, uh, you have more capacity as you're growing, certainly. Everything that I've heard already this evening, more streets, more citizens on the road, more than your for services. So it's important to have that capacity to the capital projects if and when you come up with a meeting. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. Uh, and Mr. Peacock or Mr. Francis, I'm happy to speak to that or answer any of them. What kind of rates are we looking at? And I know it's the it it's it's a a year, in January or a year ago, this is a much more fun conversation because they were so low. Uh, rates are still historically low, but we got kind of addicted to low interest rates over the last decade. Uh, right now, uh, we sold tax notes uh earlier this week in a public offering uh that were right around two point five percent. So still a a relatively low rate. Uh, I'd expect, you know, hopefully we'll be able to do that or better. I'll also say that the bond markets have been incredibly volatile in in twenty twenty two. Uh, it's been disheartening to see it was volatile this week. We have lots of different bond issues uh in the market. You've got really it's broader market dynamics. Texas is very strong. Uh, certainly, all the cities, just like Joshua, the Metroplex, uh, are very strong credits, meaning great borrowers. We've got a lot of credit streams very well run. Uh, so that's not, it's not issuer specific necessarily, that volatility in the the interest rate. It's that larger market dynamics. We've got the big bond investment funds throughout buying the bonds. They've got their customers, the retirees, et cetera. They're redeeming bonds and that causes uh supply to go up. When supply of bonds goes up, the interest rates uh go up with it because the bond prices go down. So we'll see where we are September fifteenth, uh, when we receive those interest rates, not able to lock them in until then. My hope right now is two and a half percent, and I could be right or I could be wrong. Yes. Well, I'm like, not the whole, you just kind of, you know. Sure. Yeah, if I remember right back in January, you were like a one point six. I I was hoping you weren't going to bring that up. Yeah. They were precipitously low. Yeah, yeah, it it was significant. It was a, it was a good time to borrow, and you know, the other the other cliff side of, you know, I get a lot of questions about, you know, interest rates gone up, introducing expensive, should we borrow now? And that's always a question for you all, not for me. The the need for borrowing, the cost of construction, as you all well know, is the the eye popping figure of, you know, what does a project cost today? But what did it cost six months ago versus today? Uh, that that is far more uh important to the scheme of affordability than interest rates moving up twenty five basis points. Uh, it just doesn't have the same effect for a million dollar project in terms of a half dollar project in a matter of months. But that's my own personal two cents, sort of a hard earned that I've seen from from, you know, folks on the dais having to make decisions. It's it's always trouble. Hopefully, that comes under control here in the very near term. Anybody else have any questions? So this hard, farthest question for you, I think, for pretty much what I would be looking for, the only official action that that you all take would be the authorizing of the tax note. When you've got the interest rates and that would occur on September fifteen. Uh, the point of of this tonight was one to brief you on the opportunity uh gauge your interest and and to walk away with, for me to walk away with understanding, is this something that you all want to pursue? Uh, or is it not? So that's really the only informal direction. It's there are no ordinance or resolution behind that. It's just more of an informal direction for you all. This is something you want to proceed with or or not? I have a few questions for Mr. Peacock. Thank you very much for your presentation. You're very welcome. We we've got our design and instruction people uh already working towards the the new municipal complex. Right. Uh, these funds would be earmarked for specifically for that when they're disposed to the general fund?
Well, if you send the general fund uh for most of the rest of the set, but but what I would do was ask that you self impose some restrictions on what that money can be used for. So that it would, go ahead.
I was I was going to say, the ordinance approving the tax notes, we will have to set for what those funds can be spent on. So.
Okay.
If it's for design, uh, if it's for a fire truck, uh, you're legally precluded from spending the money on something else. And so that's by law, and certainly it's the the responsible thing to do as you as a government body. This is what we intend to spend the money on. We don't have to line item by line, I would say, with the second parts this much for a project. We don't want to hem ourselves in that way because you have variance. Uh, but we do want to outline what those projects are and how they'll be included in the ordinance so that a future council uh doesn't make a decision, you know, can't make a decision and say, oh, actually, we're going to spin out a part. Well, that's that. Okay, thank you.
So it, and I I would take that to, you know, you and I have had some conversations, there is a a real possibility of a brush truck in the near future. Um, we're going to have engineering costs. We're going to have soil testing costs, and there's going to be a lot of things that are associated as as we move forward and and look at this um facility that are probably things that we're not going to want to carry debt long term on. Uh, that, and you know, the seven year issue would make quite a bit more sense to do. But it it gives us um, it gives us some room as we move forward to not have to come back if um depending on how we how how we fund the building. Lower the tax rate now and come back next year and ask them to raise it back up. You know, it kind of takes that equation out and it gives us room to go ahead and and continue in the process. And the ability to fund this fire truck, you should that it looks like that's what's going to need to happen. It just puts us in a better place to do that and not uh you deserve to do it.
Um, given the current economic situation with the three and a half percent cap on raising taxes, so on and so forth. Or in a recession, terrible way to look at it, uh, inflation is just reaching, that's not at all of us. You know, any in in tax relief that you can give is is belief, but again, with with what we're talking with two and a half cents. I mean, on you know, a hundred dollars, you're talking two dollars, you know, seven thousand dollars, you're talking two dollars. Or I'll talk a whole lot of money in in between two different tax rates. I I I want input from you guys. I mean, we we need to, we need to really think about this because this is the difference between being able to cut taxes or keeping the same. We're not going to increase taxes. It's going to be cut them or keep them same. We cut them and volume falls out. We may be having to lay people off. Yeah. Uh, if things keep going like they are, then maybe next year, uh, we are waiting on the
Homestead.
Homestead exemption.
I will be coming to you guys. Matter of fact, we've already got it scheduled in when that process starts to increase the homestead exemption.
It it is a process we have to go through, but it is something that is immediate and and something that people will know like the subject taxes, real.
Uh, and I I mean, the last time that we did that, um, I mean, for the first time that I've had my house, my house payment accident went down. And it was that homestead exemption.
And it'll it'll make.
And I'm I'm, what this does is puts, I I mean, I'll just tell you, the way I've got it penciled is it it I'll, I will be coming to you guys asking to double um the exemption.
That's the way that the front of where it's at.
That's correct.
And so you're talking about the sales tax.
The property tax.
No, I'm talking about the tax.
The the homestead exemption?
No, the tax way that we're talking about.
Would be our, would be our property tax rate.
So then the the homestead exemption has to be, has to be filed by July the first. And so we'll start that process um a few months ahead of that to to get that started and you're going to see that. I mean, you're going to see it soon as it takes effect.
So I'm on board with that. So do we want to go ahead and pursue this debt and think about leaving the tax rate the same? That's all we need to do. Nice. Just direct line to go in and get everything ready.
Yeah, he, yeah, he can get the direction that he needs, and then the next step would be to um to set the set the tax rate of of what his plan, that we can go down. If you change your mind, we can still lower the tax rate, but we can't go up. And of course, there's no appetite to go up anyway, so.
Absolutely. So I is everybody going to then to go ahead and sue and get the information together so that next month we can get the final numbers to make a decision there? Everybody good with that? Thanks.
Requires action.
Requires action, okay, also, get motion. Pursue possible issues of the tax note and the amount of dollars for expenses related to municipal projects. Uh, regardless of which, our other related costs with the caveat, we will we will decide how that needs to be spent.
My motion would be of course the issue with the taxes.
And so we are going to look at that, put up a motion the second on the issuance of the tax note. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor? unanimous. Item two, discuss consider possible action on the resolution proposing the adoption of an annual hovering tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty three and schedule a public hearing subject to all public hearing requirements of the Texas Property Tax Code. Mr. Peacock?
So it would be to uh set the tax rate at zero point seven one one four nine three, which is our current fiscal year tax rate currently.
Mayor, if I just say no, it's the proposed tax rate. Put a minute.
I'm sorry, yes, proposed.
Okay, and that proposal is changeable. This is the maximum.
You can go down, but you're not.
Correct. You have a number of you.
Zero point seven one one four nine three.
No questions?
Mayor, if I may note, this is, this resolution requires a record vote, signing individual comments.
So I have a motion to set the tax rate. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Robert Fleming and a second by Jillian Anderson. To set our annual tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and zero point seven one one four nine three. This is the proposed tax rate. Okay, this does require a voice vote. Is there any discussion before we vote? Place number one, Mr. Walter. Ms. Nichols. Hi, Robert Fleming. Okay, item number three, discuss consider possible action on development agreements between the city of Joshua. And property owners on parcels located on lot seven and eight. Part of block one in the Starloes Edition Base Two and operate as the city manager to fix all necessary documents.
This development agreement, um, there's actually two of them. It's the same as last month. Both properties are currently in the city. They have agreed to the current terms and the next item is they didn't. An ordinance to take it out of the city along with the ones that was approved last month. And just note, every development agreement is exactly the same.
So we would need to approve the development agreement in the city of Joshua and these properties.
Correct.
This is part of our trying to straighten up lines and, and all that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Okay, I'm over for motion.
I move to approve action on the development agreement between the city of Joshua and property owners and parcels. Located on lot seven, eight, E P block one is started over traditional base two.
Mr. Walter, make the motion for action on development agreement between city Joshua and property owners on parcels located on lot seven and eight. P P of block one and the Starloes Edition Base Two and to operate as city manager to execute all necessary. And second by Angela Nichols, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Okay, item number four then is to discuss consider possible action on this. This annex, this and tracks, this annex. Land strike in exhibit A, that's your two from the city of Joshua, which is section forty-three point one four two. For the Texas Local Government Code. Mr. Peacock, do you have anything to say about this?
Not sure.
Discussion, questions? For motion?
Take a motion. Dis ordinance that this annex tracks listed in exhibit.
Okay, Mr. Fleming, move to approve the ordinance, Ms. Anderson's second, any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, then number five, discuss, discuss consider possible action on an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by adding a new section. One point zero three point zero three zero zero three, signatures and seals, electronic, digital, and fax. And approving the adoption of the city rules.
Yes, this ordinance just gives me permission to accept electronic, digital signatures, including ordinances, minutes. Resolutions. It just makes it an easier process with so many boards and a council. And Terry's looked at this and we're on the same page and it's all legal, good to go. And several cities have already started practicing this. I will be using, um, oh, what's it called? DocuSign. Yes, it's approved. They have the security that we need.
Johnny, on second. Okay, so Angela knows that we approve an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by adding new section. Signatures and seal of the light product digital and fax similarly. And approving the adoption of the city rules effectively by Mr. Walter. Any discussion? All those in favor? I. It's unanimous. Okay, item number six, discussion on creating a charter review committee. Our charter is out of date. Um, some state laws have changed that we need to update our charter to be in line with. There are other things that we need to think about changing our charter to allow for certain circumstances and situations. Uh, things that weren't anticipated years ago and now, now we are running into them. I would like at least two council members to be on this charter review committee. And I would like us to bring in some citizens. I'd like to find a citizen by each to be on the, the committee as well. Uh, we will try to do it quickly. We don't want to take a lot of people's times. So, uh, we need to start the process. Any questions on discussion?
I'll be on the committee. He's, he's my one I was gonna go get.
So what, what we will do is, um, at the social meeting. Uh, we will set up the, the committee. We will set up the schedule for. The, their, their meetings and everything. I would like to have this done before the end of the year. I, I think, I think it's a doable thing. We're not rewriting everything. We're just gonna make some corrections. I also want each of you to go through the chart and look for things that you think might need to be changed and, and updated. If there's something you need to add, come with recommendations in writing, please. Um, you know, Alice, Alice is good, but you know, let's, let's make sure that, that, that we look at. The committee will review everything and come up with a set of recommendations and then the council will vote on it. Once we have come up with these recommended changes, they have to go on the ballot. For the, for the community to vote on versus this to vote on. This is a very, very important document. And we, we want to make sure that, that we get our input from our citizens on it. Um, that would be the May seventh or the May.
Yes.
Uh, this, this coming May. Uh, that will give us time to get everything done, get it on the ballot properly. And have time to, to discuss it with our citizens as we go about the community. So, any other questions?
I have a question. You would know exactly, um, the laws that have changed that Mr..
Yes, um, and Terry and I talked about this pretty much and he's got some great recommendations. One thing we probably need to do is a resolution that sets the rules and procedures, um, that'll keep us going. Also, how many members you want to point it and that's something we can have at the next meeting if you like.
And we, we will ask Terry to actually go through and, and check the charter. Anything that needs to be changed or adapted for changes in law, we give responsibility. Specifically for the law. There's other things in there that, that are how we want our city to run and continue to grow. Anything else?
Uh, the only other thing, unless Terry wants to weigh in, we talked about. Me, Mike, and at least him, because we reviewed a charter so as employees to sit in and assist, um, to go through the process.
Any more questions about the charter review committee?
Can I ask a question, Alice?
Yes.
Oh, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I had a couple of things to, to try to get this done by the end of the year. Um, I mean, I, Alice and I did speak about it, coming up with a resolution, kind of giving the charter review committee some ideas about areas to look at. Usually makes it a little more, it, it, it makes it a little easier to, to, they, for the charter review commission to know what they want to look at. And so that's, uh, and she's correct that we can all get together beforehand with Mike and Alice and Mayor perhaps with you too. And just come up with some of the, the areas that need to be changed because state law has changed or because. Things don't operate as well as they should and we want to try to adjust something in the charter. Um, but one question I'd have is if we have a resolution on the council agenda next month to appoint a charter review commission. Tell me what you would anticipate, uh, than to have the number of people, would it be? Uh, for example, would it be two council members and each, and each council member gets to appoint a member? Or how would you, how would you propose going about doing that? So would you prepare a resolution appointing the charter commission?
Uh, I, I think the, uh, two council members can each council member, uh, getting or appointing a citizen.
Okay.
Seven citizens, two council members.
So Terry, would the, the count include staff?
Uh, no, I mean, we, we, we will be there for, you know, information, et cetera. Uh, and then it comes time to draft ordinances or either calling, calling the election and what the specific ballot language would look like. Will, I mean, I'll participate in all that, but I would anticipate. And I mean that we would all meet just kind of internally together, get some ideas about areas that need to be changed. And then, and next, next month, maybe have a discussion of there are other areas council feels that needed, needs to be looked at. Uh, we could, we could add those areas as well. Uh, I, I've done quite a few of these over the years. I've always kind of found that it's better to have a list of things to look at versus. Here's a charter, just have at it and do whatever you want. That's a little open ended. Wait, if we're gonna try to do this by year end, where we'll be. Um, will you appointing people in September and that gives us about three months.
Is that so? Now, I think we need to, is my goal too lofty?
No, I don't, I don't think so at all. I mean, you, you're always gonna lose some time around the holidays, no matter what. But we have to, the, I think, uh, I'll rely on Alice, the exact day, the earliest day to call election would be about, usually about mid-January. So we would have to have it pretty well put to bed. Uh, and you know, calling the election by the, probably by the January meeting, perhaps the February meeting, if we have enough time. Uh, so no, I don't think that's too lofty. I mean, I've gone through, I mean, our, our charter is in pretty good shape. There need to be some tweaks to it. But we're not doing a, a charter rewrite that would take months and months. I mean, I, I've gone through a couple of these where we've met. Uh, maybe three times, uh, the charter review commission, we've met three times and have come up with, uh. Come up with what needs to be amended and then I prepare the, the ordinance, uh, with exact language. So, uh, I can strike through about the language we're deleting and the language we're adding, et cetera. So I, I don't, I don't think that's a, uh, it's, it's, it's somewhat aggressive, but it's certainly doable.
When we call the election in, uh, in January, uh, or when we have to call it. Do we have to have all the items that we're going to change on the charter or can we call it and then finish up if we need to?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to, when we call the election, we'll have to tell them what it's for and go through that process. So I think we get that done. I mean, cause, uh, um. Just with the holidays being a break when people don't want to meet. Uh, I would generally say, let's try to get that done by mid-December, thereabouts, because it, it'd be. Um, when we call the election, we're gonna have to actually put the language on that we're gonna use on the ballot. Cause that, that will be a special election along with our general election in May. So we, we would need to have verbatim what's gonna be on the ballot so people would understand what we're doing.
Okay, all right. I, I think we're. Okay, you might have any more questions about the charter review committee?
Well, they need it night afternoon.
Gotta be up to the, to the committee.
We, I, I would think evening meetings probably be what was gonna be. Yeah. I would say it's probably going to be evening meetings. Okay, any other questions? Awesome. All right, staff reports. Anybody have any questions on the staff reports? Any staff want to say anything?
I want to say something to the police because I finally started getting the reports. And just wanted to say what a great job they're doing. Uh, the presence is visible and I can tell people are slowing down a little more. So that's very good.
I could tell me, um, some of you may not know, but, um, you showed your appreciation. Uh, last Thursday to the staff for all the working heat and. Extra patrols and Molly spending all the economic well money and all that stuff. Um, we, we did a very quick, um, staff meeting. We brought almost everyone in. We're lacking a few, but because we wanted some input on benefits and what was important to them. Where we need to start meeting up the carriers just go around. It's, we got loads of information. And we finished that with, we had somebody come in that did some ice cream and waffle bows and made dynamics out of. And they passed out a lot of ice cream, so I know they enjoyed it. So thank you for that.
We appreciate our staff so much that we, we have a great city staff. I, I keep saying that, I, I was looking at the budget numbers and everything. Our fire department has gotten just about every incentive that the, uh. That they've been able to get from the E S D this year, if I'm correct. Uh, they, they have met every goal and I'm to a hundred percent on so many of them. It's, it's awesome. Uh, our, our police department, I know these guys are out there risking their lives every day on the planet we live in nowadays. Appreciate y'all so much. And, you know, I, I'll tell you guys, if you've been out now some of our roads lately, they have been on their hands. And they are doing the best that, that they can do. I appreciate the hard work so much. Parks and park, you know, he was, how do you keep our grass green? We ain't got no rain. You know, but, but we still have a part that people are enjoying and, and wanting on a regular basis. Uh, Molly, she's just out spending money, so. Uh, but she is working very hard on bringing new things in our city to improve quality of life for our citizens. And Joanne, the, the county department, man, they, they're, you know, straight. Guys, ever want to know where all the money's going? She'll tell you exactly and she'll show you the papers approved.
Molly's getting a bad rap, but she, she, she is doing a fantastic. I hope she knows I'm just kidding her, but, uh, she really is doing a fantastic job.
I want to say thank you to y'all for making this a great place to work. It's nice to be appreciated.
We definitely do appreciate y'all. So I'm trying, still trying to figure out a lot of what Amber does. Is everything Mike does works too? All right, uh, at this time, the city council, city of Joshua will recess into an executive session. Uh, pursuant to revisions of chapter five five one, subchapter D, Texas Government Code to discuss and follow me. A, pursuant to section five five one point oh seven two of the Texas Government Code to discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We are recessing into that at eight twenty-two. We are back in session at eight forty-four. Any other business, any future agenda items, questions?
Um, Mike, can you look at, um, our city ordinances, especially with the trees? I know I expressed the concern previously about, uh, whenever the developers come. And they clear the laws totally, but it breaks my heart. Every time I see those old oak trees gone.
Sue, you want to review the city ordinances on trees?
Yes, yes, absolutely. They promised to keep them, but then I drove by and they were gone.
Well, the orders require certain species of trees have to be protected.
Yeah.
Unless they're in the footprint of the bill.
I, I get it.
But yeah, we'll get yours.
There should be no discussion, just the item on this.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I would like to see an agenda item next month about where we are as far as improving internet access within the community. Okay, there's some state money out there that's getting ready to be released. I kind of want to know where, where we're headed and get that. All right, anything else? Okay, then at eight forty-six, we're adjourned.